The Town Meeting Program now prepares to commence and unfold before you here on this Friday. Very glad to have you with us. I'm JR Lewis on KLAM. And our program is always is brought to you by Cordova Wireless Communications, your local cellphone and wireless data provider, providing your local talk show. So we can tell you about things like the fact that Sarah Lewis is coming to town. That reminds me of a holiday zone. And Sarah Lewis is part of the University of Alaska Cooperative Extension Service, which you'll learn about in this program. And her purpose for being here from March 14th through the 17th is to teach a variety of classes having to do with food preservation and food safety. Obviously, we have a lot of folks interested in those topics. So for anyone looking to make sure they're doing everything they can to be as effective and healthy, that doing that is possible, this should be an interesting series of classes. And hopefully for you today, an interesting show. So stay with us for the next little while and learn about what Sarah Lewis has planned for these multiple classes coming up in mid-March. That's the subject of today's Town Meeting. So Sarah, let me first off congratulate you on that vigorous last name of yours. I'm so proud.
Yes, indeed. We Lewis's. We Lewis's. We're all over the world now, aren't we?
Yeah, now are you of Scottish descent? Have you ever done any of the background?
Um, you know, I've done the, I've done the, what is it, the 23andMe and discovered that basically, sort of Scandinavian through Scotland and Ireland and Wales and on over here. But I think Ireland, Wales, Scotland, that area, yes, for sure.
Well, I think it's very cool that we have our own island for the family. And although you and I aren't related in any way we know of at any rate.
Not that we know of.
I do wish that our tartan didn't look like mustard, but you know.
You know, you don't, you just can't make those choices anymore.
You can't have everything. No, you certainly can't. Well, let's get to know you a little bit now. Are you a lifelong Alaskan? Are you a transplant? How'd you get started in this up here?
I am a lifelong Alaskan. I was born in Anchorage. And when my dad was going to AMU, which is now not AMU, it used to be Alaska Methodist. It's now APU, I believe. So I was born in Anchorage and then we moved to Juneau when I was about three. So I have been a Juneauite for the past 50 years.
Outstanding. Well, and it's obviously a rather important community in the state. And how about getting involved in this particular area? Has this idea of working with food in these various ways, has that been something that was part of your upbringing? Or did you learn it later? How'd you get into it?
So you just, you just have started the whole can of worms. You've opened it up.
So well, if you packed it, then I know the worms are in good shape.
And they're so, oh yeah, they're going to be food safe. No. So, no, I did not start in food in any way. I am actually a licensed architect. So yeah, that you probably didn't see that coming, but yeah, my bachelor's degree is in architecture. I was a licensed architect. I still am a licensed architect in the state of Alaska. I practiced for about 20 years. But then also in the middle of that, I went and got my Master of Social Work at UAA for a period, when I was living in Anchorage for a period of time. And so I have a Master of Social Work that I added to architecture. And for me, and this will come back around to food. For me, for me, both of those professions are about helping people thrive. So whether it's thriving in their built environment, their, you know, community design environment, or whether it's within their social family environment. That's what those two professions have always been to me. So that is my educational background.
Sure.
And so Cooperative Extension is the community education arm of our land grant university, which in Alaska is University of Alaska Fairbanks. And so what Cooperative Extension Services do throughout the nation, they have been associated with land grant universities for more than 100 years. And we've had ours in Alaska here for closing in on 100 years, I believe. And so what we do is community education and we bring research-based information, whether it's from universities or other research institutions to the general public. So we don't focus our education on folks at the university necessarily. You know, they're not for credit courses. But what we do in that is we are, our programming is extremely diverse. So a lot of people will have heard about the Master Gardener Program. Or they will have heard about the 4H Youth Development Program. Those are two, you know, very important nationwide programs that the Cooperative Extension does. But then there's all kinds of other programming from food, anything related to food, not just a growing of it, but food preservation, safe food preparation, food safety, nutrition, aging. And then we get into, you know, how does food relate to health? So healthy aging and we get into chronic disease prevention or chronic disease management, like diabetes prevention, et cetera. And then Cooperative Extension also gets into even some community development and entrepreneurship stuff. So food starts to move into how do you start a cottage foods business, et cetera. How did I end up at Extension? Well, I started when I was an architect for the city of Juneau. I started working on our Sustainability Commission. I was on the, on that commission here in Juneau. This is many years ago now when it first started. And I became very interested in food security. And in, you know, Southeast Alaska and coastal Alaskan communities, the challenges associated with our wild food resources, food being shipped in from outside, et cetera. All the things that have to do with food security in our really sort of geographically complicated location. And so I got really into food at that point while I was still an architect. And then there was a point when I was ready to sort of switch out from architecture for various reasons. And I got involved as a volunteer with the Cooperative Extension, their 4H Program and some things that had to do with local harvest, the local food festival that's here in Juneau. I helped, you know, early on with getting that started when I was on that Sustainability Commission. So when I was getting ready to switch out of architecture, there was a position available with the Cooperative Extension. That was honestly could include all things from home design and home energy all the way through to food safety and starting a cottage foods business. So I applied and I got the job and I've been doing this for 11 years and I love it.
Yeah.
And it is about helping people thrive here in Southeast Alaska in their environment and in our food system that we have up here. So see, I told you, I told you it was going to be a long story.
Oh, hey, you know, that's the, if we don't know where we came from, then there's some, then some proverb, something or other. By the way, you, you mentioned 4H. Are you familiar with our beloved Belle Mickelson?
I, you know, someone actually just started getting me in contact with Belle today, actually. We have a mutual friend, Amy O'Neill-Hawk. Yep. And, and so, yes, so I'm, and I also knew her name before that, but I am not. So I'm not the 4H agent or, or the agriculture horticulture agent. I am the Health Home and Family Development Agent. And so, yeah, so I will work with 4H if 4H sort of requests me to. But youth are invited to all of my programming, whether they're 4H or not.
Yes. Well, no, that, I mean, I just, I was just curious if you guys had crossed paths because she is a juggernaut of 4H greatness. And you know, she got it started, has seen it through all the way along, has taken it in directions that 4H typically doesn't go and she's just, she's just amazing.
Yeah, 4H in Alaska is, it's a wonder of its own just because we are very different from what people might think of as being the environment and the activities that, you know, the standard quote unquote 4H in terms of, you know, like animal husbandry and farming and things like that. Here in Alaska, 4H is really just an amazing thing for sure. So I look forward to meeting her when I'm up there in Cordova.
Good. Well, and how did Cordova end up on your radar as a place to do this?
So that's actually pretty great too. I like this story also. So Cordova is unfortunately kind of in this little gray area between different extension districts. So my district is Southeast, which typically just goes up to Yakatah, right? In terms of, if you're looking at the map of the districts of Extension. And we have another agent who's in Anchorage and we have an Anchorage, an agent who's in the Matsu. And, and I believe, you know, one of their districts sort of comes, is down sort of super close to Cordova, but not really. And so Cordova has always been one that I've wanted to reach out to, but it wasn't really my district. But then I was advertising an annual online course that I do called Preserving Alaska's Bounty. And so it's over several weeks. It's partially online and we do four, you know, four or five Zooms for that program. And boom, back at the end of last year, when people were registering for it, I had like four people all at once register for it from Cordova. And, and so I went and a couple of them were from, were in, with, they worked with the IAC tribe. So I saw that and I actually have some different funding sources that allow me to travel places. And one of them is through Tribes Extension, which is a statewide program. It is managed by Heidi Raider, who is an Extension Agent up in the Fairbanks area. And so I saw that there was tribe interest and community interest in Cordova. So I contacted those people that registered for that course and said, hey, would you like me to come in person instead? The classes will actually be cheaper and they'll be in person. And of course, everybody said, yes. So I worked with the folks who had registered to find a good time to come. And that's how it happened. They all unregistered from that other class, getting ready for me to come on up in person.
Well, I'd like to believe there are people that listen to our morning news program because we have been reading news releases about Cooperative Extension programs for a while. Even if that's not the case, I'm going to pretend that's why people signed up.
You have that ask, even if it's not the case, it's an aspiration. I'm good with that.
Why let facts get in the way of a good story? All right. Well, let's, let's jump into the meat of it here. You are going to be here, well, it's not too long from now, mid-March. What are you doing and when? Let's go through the agenda.
You bet. So I will be in Cordova from March 14th. I leave on the 18th, the morning of. So 14th through the 17th is when I'm giving programming. So I will be the first one on the 14th. So all of these classes that I'm going to list right now, they are going to be offered at the Cordova High School Home Ec Room. I've called it like Teaching Kitchen or Home Ec Room. But if, if someone isn't unfamiliar, is unfamiliar with that space, there'll be signs on the door. But probably folks are familiar with what I'm talking about. So the Cordova High Teaching Kitchen there, so all of these classes. So from 5:30 to 6:30 on the 14th, I will be teaching a Starting a Cottage Foods Business Class. So although we will be in the Teaching Kitchen, that isn't a sort of hands-on kitchen-based class, but it is talking about food-related stuff in terms of what foods qualify for cottage foods, exemption by DEC, what that means, how can you, you know, all the things, some of the things that have to do with starting a small food entrepreneurship business.
Okay.
Then there'll be a quick break and at seven, from seven to eight, I will be teaching a class called Intro to On-Farm Food Safety. One of the things that I do with Extension, that though it is quite clearly sort of agriculture/horticulture related, I am on the statewide produce safety training team. So this is actually a federal program that helps people learn how to have food safety in a farm setting. So how to make sure that the produce that might be eaten raw by people, for example, is going to be handled correctly on the farm through to wherever it is that you're going to sell it or get it to your consumers. But actually looking at some of the food safety aspects of handling food, even though we think of produce as being just, you know, just a raw product that goes through the system, it is actually food, right? So, so I have a quick thing for anybody who either wants to share their garden bounty or actually sells it, or is thinking about things like that. Just a quick run-through on some of the most important food safety aspects on the farm. Yeah. So that's on, those are both on Thursday, March 14th.
And that information, as you indicated, that breaks down to, I mean, even if somebody wasn't going to be transferring their, the things that they grow, they could still learn safe handling practices that'd be good for their own. Okay. So it's not just for people that are gonna, that are gonna give it away or sell it or something, but just anybody for safe gardening practices.
Yes, that's absolutely true. And so the Standard Produce Safety Alliance Training that we offer throughout the state is actually about an eight-hour training. And so you can see that this is going to be in one hour. So this really is to introduce people to some of the basic food safety things, but also to kind of help people determine whether maybe they should or would like to go on to the larger training based on some of the things that I talk about there.
Okay. And if my notes are correct, the first event, the one at 5:30 on Cottage Food Businesses is free, then the second one is all of $5?
Oh, actually, so they're both free. That was a typo that, that made it out in a few different places. They are both, both of those classes are free.
Okay. Well, then I need to just grab my magic pen and scratch that right out.
Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, that went out incorrectly.
Nope, that's fine. Okay. So that takes care of the 14th and then we move on to Friday.
Yes. So on Friday, I'm teaching a class from 5:30 to 8:00 again at the high school Teaching Kitchen. I'm teaching pickling and fermenting vegetables. So this is going to be a hands-on kitchen-based class. So we will be in a kitchen. I will talk about the process. I'll talk about some of the various food safety issues related to different types of pickling, whether it's vinegar pickling or fermentation pickling. And then people will actually make some stuff. We will pickle, we will do some vinegar pickles and learn how to water bath can those vinegar pickles. But we will also start some fermentation pickles that people will take home with them and baby through the fermentation process.
Okay. And that's a $10 class?
That one is a $15 class.
$15 class. All right. See, that's why I'm glad we're doing this show because.
Yeah, thank you. And what I might do is I'll, I'm actually looking at the flyer right now, the official flyer that went out. So I'll make sure that you get a copy of the flyer. Because that might've come out a little bit later than the PSA.
And the PSA also says something about an open house from noon to 1:30 at the Cordova Center. Is that still going to happen?
That is right. So on the 15th, which is separate from the classes, I am going to do, we call it an Extension Open House. And that will be at the Cordova Center. That's the one time that I'm teaching something outside of the high school. And so if you're familiar with pressure canning, one of the important things that needs to be done every year is if you have a pressure canner that has a dial gauge, that dial gauge should be tested every year to find out its level of accuracy. So that's one very major thing that I'm going to be doing at that open house is I will be doing free canner gauge testing. That is, it's a nationwide USDA program that Cooperative Extension Offices do, you know, throughout the nation. And so it's free and it takes about five minutes. So from noon to 1:30 at the Cordova Center, feel free to bring either just your dial gauge itself, if you can easily take it, you know, out of the canner lid, or you can bring the whole lid in if it's difficult to take that gauge off of it. Totally fine to bring the whole lid in. And between noon and 1:30, I will also have a whole bunch of free publications. So the Cooperative Extension writes and publishes a whole bunch of free publications on everything from canning salmon to, you know, composting, et cetera. I will mostly have publications that are related to food preservation and wild food resources in Alaska. I might have a few gardening ones, but folks can come and get free publications or ask me any questions they have about food preservation, canning, et cetera. And they can potentially get their gauge tested.
All right. Good. So that open house is noon to 1:30 at the Cordova Center. And then you're back at the high school for the pickling class from 5:00 to 8:00. All right. And then that rounds out. Friday, we all digest our new knowledge and then we come back on Saturday.
Exactly, exactly. So on Saturday, March 16th, I've got two longer kitchen-based classes. So from 10:00 to noon, oh, I'm sorry. No, so from 10:00 to noon, I have a Cooking for Brain Health. So that is sort of where the cooking and food safety and, and, you know, nutrition sort of crosses over into the healthy aging, preventing chronic disease, stuff like that. So I have a Cooking for Brain Health Class that will also be a hands-on kitchen-based class where we will learn how to include certain ingredients in our food that are known to be helpful to brain function, whether that's cognitive function or, you know, the physical health of the brain. And so I will be bringing some of that information into a class where people will make a few, you know, a few dishes and we'll share them. And that one is $10.
Okay, good. The announcement I have is correct on that. So that's 10 to noon on the 16th and then later the afternoon of Saturday?
Yes. So from 2:00 to 7:00 PM on Saturday, the 16th, I will be doing the first Preserving the Bounty Class. So I call it Preserving the Bounty 1, Fruit and Berries. So it's about preserving fruit and berries. Again, it's a, that's a relatively long kitchen-based class. We will learn about water bath canning, dehydrating. And it will focus on fruits and berries that can either be, you know, tend to be, obviously, berries from the wild in Alaska, but also fruits that tend to be harvested from, you know, Alaskan gardens. And so I'll usually like apples and, and things like that would be in the, in the fruit recipes. But water bath canning and dehydrating are the two main food preservation methods that we will talk about and actually get to do in that class. So you will leave the class with jars of delightful, colorful foods.
Good. And is the $25 correct on that?
The $25 is correct on that one.
Good. All right. And again, we'll, you said you're going to send me a flyer. I will.
I am. I will make sure to do that.
I will, just as I'm thinking aloud here, for anybody hearing this program, the on-demand archive version on the YouTube channel, I will attempt to get a link to that or paste the text in the description or something. So folks will be able to access that easily. Certainly. And then Sunday, Sunday, Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday, Sunday.
It's St. Patrick's Day of all days.
St. Patrick's Day. I know. So probably there will be some nod to that, you know, in one of my classes that day. I'm not sure what yet. We'll see. But from 10:00 to noon again, this time it's, it's another cooking class, but it's specifically Cooking for Bone Health. So looking at those foods that have nutrients in them that are specifically bone strengthening or help maintain bone density throughout the lifespan. And, you know, spoiler alert, one of those is canned salmon, especially canned salmon with bones in it. So that's a very ubiquitous food in Alaska. So, and so we will be, again, that'll be kitchen-based. We'll do some recipes that include ingredients that are good for bone health.
And $10 there?
$10 for that one.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. Yeah. I think you'll find that there's plenty of salmon mentality, salmon supply, salmon love in the community of Cordova.
Yeah, we got it throughout Alaska. It's super good.
All right. And 2:00 to 7:00?
Then from 2:00 to 7:00 is the second Preserving the Bounty Class with a focus on fish, meat, and vegetables. So in this one, you'll learn about pressure canning, a little bit about freezing, some of the best ways to do that for high-quality results. So pressure canning, freezing, and dehydrating will be covered in that class. Again, focusing on meat and fish and vegetables that are either, you know, wild harvest or grow well in Alaska. So that one is also $25. And like the fruit and berries ones, you will leave with some jars of food.
Yeah. Well, that's a great list. And I noticed, by the way, we referred to some of the fees, which again, given what you can learn, are very, very minimal. I mean, you think about the money you can save by learning how to preserve food in a way that you like and then not have that go bad on you. You know, the food waste savings alone, I would think, would, would make up for that. But I noticed that you have an offer to, for tribal members to be able to take the classes at no charge and any youths who were joined by an adult. Is that correct?
That is correct. And those are, you know, because, like I said, I think I said earlier, there's various funding sources that, that I work under. You know, we get sort of federal funds that go through the university to my general programming. And then there's Tribes Extensions funding. And then there's also 4H and other youth development funds. And so there are funds that actually will cover the fee for anyone who registers, who is a tribe member. And that doesn't mean just IAC tribe locally there in Kodiak, I mean, in Cordoba, but anywhere, right? And so, and then youth, same thing. There are funds that are available that will pay those fees for any youth who sign up that come from different funding sources that makes it possible for folks to take these classes. But I also want to point out that I have a very, no questions asked. You know, if you need either a 50% or a full fee waiver, if you don't already get the class for free, I basically, you just let me know and you also can have either 50% or 100% off. And those funds come from sort of my program funds, which are considerably less than those other funds.
Yeah, sure.
So, yeah. And so, because really the goal is, you know, only really to be paying the fees that people are paying is, is to help defray the costs of the ingredients and the jars, basically. The Tribes Extension and, and other funds are paying for all of my travel and for my time. And so the workshop ingredients are really all those fees need to cover. And yeah, so there's lots of different fund sources for paying for them. And so if someone, I don't want the fee, the, you know, $25 or $10 to be a barrier. And so if someone, if that's a barrier, just say, you know, that's barrier and the class will be free.
Okay. And when you, your youths are what, under 18? Is that?
Yeah, you know, sometimes we say under 16, but really, under 18 is also fine. What it usually is, is if you're under 16, I'd like you to come with an adult.
Right.
You know, depending on, you know, the, you know, the competence and stuff of the kid and all that kind of stuff. But yes, youth under 18 would be considered youth for the free charge. And then if you're under, under 14 to 16, younger than that, I'd like you to come with an adult.
Okay, sounds good. Well, then that brings us to how to get in touch with you, how to register, that kind of thing. How, what are all the contact info?
Yeah. So if you want to, so to register, I'll start there. We have, when I send you the flyer, there is actually a QR code on that that people can just shoot their phone at, you know, when they're looking at the screen. Or there's a website, which is a Bitly website. So that's B as in boy, I T dot L Y backslash Cordova workshops. And Cordova is capitalized and workshops is capitalized and there's no punctuation in there. So it's Bitly backslash Cordova workshops. That will also get you to both of those things. The QR or that web address will get you to the registration page. And on that registration, registration is not required, pre-registration is not required, but it really helps me with my planning. So it would be awesome if you did. And it also does not commit you to coming to the class. So if something comes up and you can't come, whatever, that's fine. But it helps me sort of have an idea of how many people are going to be showing up for a class. And so it'd be great if folks would pre-register at the B I T dot L Y backslash Cordova workshops. That would be terrific. If you have any questions, you can reach me at Sarah, S A R A H dot Lewis, L E W I S, at Alaska dot E D U. Or my phone is 907-455-2010.
Okay. And I see that accommodation requests for disability, you'll certainly work with those, but you ask for some advance notice?
Yes, please. Yes. So if there are any accommodations required, we do ask to have at least five business days to kind of, especially when I'm coming into a community where I might need to be finding resources for somebody.
Sure.
Five business days in advance, and that's business days, not just days.
Right.
So that we have some time. But those requests will go to our administrative assistant here in Juneau, who's Susie, and her number is 907-523-3280. Or Susie, S U S I E dot Wilkie, W I L K I. W I L K I E, at Alaska dot E D U. And that include that. And then in, in addition to that is, is if there are any language access services
Right.
that are needed, we, we're finding out about that before the class as well. The, um, we typically, I will only teach classes in places that are, um, accessible. So schools, you know, obviously are great. And, uh, the Cordova Center. And so those locations are generally accessible.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, so if there's additional things on top of that, I would need to know about that in advance.
Okay. Well, um, I mean, it, it sounds fascinating. Uh, I really hope you have good turnout. Any, any final thoughts, you know, in the way of an overview or, you know, sort of what you want to leave people with?
Yeah. So I, I mean, it was no, it, it was both a surprise and not a surprise that I had such a strong response to my previous class to, uh, from folks in Cordova, because I know that Cordova is a very food-forward place, you know? And, um, and so I'm actually just really pleased that we're being able to sort of extend the Cooperative Extension to Cordova. And that in a way, I'm, I'm kind of claiming, y'all. So, uh, so, uh, you know, Cordova, I'm considering it now part of my district. I've also claimed Kodiak. So folks who are on, you know, have coastal Alaska, the more southern coastal Alaska communities, um, definitely many similarities and affinities. And so I'm really pleased to be able to extend some, uh, extension, um, programming when it comes to food to more places.
Yeah. Well, it is a big deal. And I mean, it was one of the, one of the first things on everybody's mind being, you know, cause of course we're a roadless community, just like Juneau.
Yep. Yep.
So,
That's exactly right.
When, uh, when, uh, the pandemic started, of course, that was one of those things everybody was thinking about, you know, what are we gonna, how's the supply gonna work? Is, is everything gonna break down? And as it turns out, it didn't. But, um, you know, it makes you think. And, and
It does.
It's, it's smart. Uh, you know, we just went through recently, this big drill, this, this tsunami, uh, the potential tsunami quake drill, big massive exercise. And, um, one of the things that comes up in the literature when they're talking about that is having, having a week's worth of something on hand. And, um, if you don't want it to all be pilot bread and, and Reese's peanut butter cups or something, not a bad idea to have some things that are actually good for you, prepared and stored and ready in case,
Yep.
you know, something happens. So it sounds like this all fits right into that, too.
Yeah. And that's actually, to be honest, that's one of the program areas that I didn't necessarily list earlier, but emergency preparedness is one of my program areas.
Hmm.
And it's funny because often I do kind of cover that, you know, when I'm talking about food preservation and wild food resources and et cetera. But, uh, so some of the publications that I will have at the open house on Friday, the 15th, um, will be some emergency preparedness publications also, because it's all definitely, like you said, our roadless communities, we have challenges that the people all over the world don't necessarily have. We have some. And when it comes to preparing for unexpected events, whether that's a, an unexpected event in your home, I mean, it could be an, uh, an illness that you weren't expecting and suddenly you don't, you're not able to shop for a month.
Sure.
Or it could be something as big as a natural disaster
Yeah.
that keeps, uh, you know, shipping from coming to the community. There's, and everything in between, knowing where your food, how much food you have, where it's coming from, um, and whether you can keep it at a good, high quality for nutrition and things like that. All of those are really good things to know.
Good. Well, I'm glad you'll, you'll be available to make the visit. I hope it's the first of, of many. And, um, you know, maybe
As do I.
also, would, it'd be great, too, if it would broaden the relationship between Cordova and the Cooperative Extension Service that maybe, you know, if, if the turnout is good and the interest in there i- is there, then other topics, some of the other things that, that Cooperative Extension does could become available to us.
Yes.
And this could be the catalyst.
Yes, for sure.
So I certainly hope that's the case. Sarah, thank you so much for the time and the visit.
Absolutely.
Um, I hope you have a wonderful time coming to see us and, uh, we wish you all the best. Glad you could be on the show.
I look forward to it. Thank you so much, JR. See you soon.
If memory serves, I told you that this was going to be a fairly interesting programming. We hope you found it to be so. Sarah Lewis of the University of Alaska Cooperative Extension Service headed our way soon to teach all the classes you just learned about. And by the way, those of you listening on the radio, this show will go, as all our town meeting shows go, into our YouTube archive, where the programs are available for on-demand listening after they air on the radio. And in the description there, I will link to the flyer that Sarah talked about that has all the details and put information in the description about how to get in touch and how to register and all that kind of thing. And as we discussed, there were some typos and incorrect numbers in the initial version of the news release that was sent to me. So she corrected those in the show, and we'll have all the corrected information available. So if you want any of that, just go to youtube.com/cordovatv and watch for this show to appear. Usually I'm able to get them up pretty quick, if not right away after we finish up on the radio, by about 11:00 AM the day of the show, unless there's some sort of a delay. And as always, with that on-demand listening, if you joined us midway through the show or know somebody who might enjoy learning more about what Sarah had to say and about these topics, absolutely pass along that link to anybody that you like. Or again, if you just tell them youtube.com/cordovatv, we're pretty easy to find. Now, of course, none of this would be possible without the support of Cordova Wireless Communications, longtime sponsor of local talk radio here on Clam, and longtime bringer of funds, along with their sister organization there, Cordova Telecom Cooperative, bringer of funds into Cordova that we don't have to harvest, but we get to use them, because they then take those outside dollars and they spend them on stuff here. And then people that they spent those with, those people can spend them on other stuff here and they circle around. And it's like $12 million a year infused into the local economy, because they are the type of businesses that they are. So thank you, Cordova Wireless. And secondarily, thank you, CTC, for that valuable resource and for making the Town Meeting Talk Show possible, specifically Cordova Wireless on that one. Everything that you are supposed to get to hear, the calendar, Fish Radio, Classifieds, that's all on the way as we get back to regular programming. Thank you again, Sarah Lewis, for being our guest. Thanks to all of you who listen, and we hope you have a great rest of your day.